It is four oh one PM on the twenty-fifth of September.
September.
Two thousand twenty-four, we're at City Hall Council Chambers. Uh, you want to take roll call?
Maybe the pledge allegiance first.
Oh, how dare we forget. It's the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okey dokey. It looks like our first order is roll call.
Board member Dufrane.
Here.
Board member Johnson.
Here.
Vice Chair Marty Spalding.
Here.
Alternate board member Dan Dilworth.
Here.
Teresa, oh, I did forget, I'm sorry, Community Development Director Teresa Waldo.
Here.
And myself, Kelly, Kelso Kelly.
All right, it appears as though we need to appoint a recording secretary. Do we have any nominations for such? Would, do I hear a nomination for Kelso Kelly as recording secretary?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Support.
Congratulations, you've been nominated.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed? That appears to be unanimous. Now, we're going to take a look at the, uh, the, uh, agenda for today's meeting and approve it as written unless there are any amendments. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as it is presented?
So moved.
About a second.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Conflict of interest, does anybody have any conflicts with any of the imaginary things on our agenda today? Considering we have no real agenda items.
No.
Not hearing any. Let me get rid of my noisy in my phone here. We will move on to the approval of the minutes from the Janifair, January twenty-fifth meeting, which I believe everybody should have a copy of in front of them. They were on the desk when you got here today. They have been available since January. Anybody have any comments or changes, additions, subtractions, clarifications, anything that's in there? Dennis would have been the only one that was there, other than me. I have none, you have any?
None, so I moved it, approved the minutes.
So moved, support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing. Any members of the public have any comments on anything that is on our agenda today? Not, uh, new business or something unknown to us that there is a time for at the end, I believe, for public comment. Not hearing any, we'll move on to case study number two in new business.
That's correct, so I asked all of you to be here because especially the case study number ten, the second one we're going to do is a great example of our current downtown, and I've been having some questions asked, and so I wanted to bring us all together. Plus, we have a few new members. I think it's good to have a meeting twice a year, keep ourselves sharp, and just review and just do some discussion. So we can go ahead and move along to case study number two. Would you like me to read that aloud?
Does anybody, who has not had time to review this themselves, anybody? Everybody said a chance to at least look at it? I know I've done a little analysis, I don't know if reading it's gonna-
Great, no, that's fine, no, so let's discuss, let's dive in.
Okay. I think that a good thing to do, the way that I take something like this on, is I kind of take a look at the elements of what is presented, and you can almost right off the bat sometimes just eliminate things that aren't relevant to the consideration. Uh, for me, as an example, when I look at this, I see that they're, they're basically telling me that somebody's using uh, an existing structure that's on a piece of property as an art studio. Now, what I'm also kind of determining here is that it's not being held out as any kind of a showroom or retail structure. The guy's using it himself to create his art in. To me, you can almost kind of scratch out the fact that it's an art studio, um, because what he's doing in there isn't any different than planting flowers or working on his lawnmower. He's using it himself, it's not a public undertaking. There's no parking that's going to be involved. It's an existing structure, so there's no setback consideration. There's no code i- issues here. Um, the only thing that jumps out at me a little bit, is if my memories, and I only read this a couple times because I've been really, really crazy busy. It has a, it has a bathroom in it, a toilet?
Yeah, it has a half bath, or there would be a half bath as part of this art studio.
So, kind of my way of thinking on this is, is if he wanted to put a half bath in it, that really doesn't preclude it from still being a potting shed or a place to fix your lawnmower. And to me, we would, we would defer to the building inspection department, unless, my question to staff in a situation like this one would be, is there any prohibition on a man cave or a she shed having a bathroom in it? I don't think that there are any, I think a garage can have a bathroom in it, can't it?
That's, well, I don't know, that's a good question, and I don't know the answer to that, about that.
What, in my whole reading of this, that's the only thing I'm seeing here as being an issue at all. The rest of this, it's an existing structure.
No, it's supposed to be a new structure.
Oh, this is a new-
New structure.
This is a new structure that he wanted-
And he wants to build it for his mega studio.
I, then again, I would think that if this is a-
Just an accessory structure.
Yeah, if, if it meets setback, it's no different than a, the place to fix your lawnmower or plant your flowers. You know, the, the whole discussion about being an art studio, and, you know, his duck artwork was accepted by, that's all, that's-
Yes.
The only thing that would come in, uh, bearing in the city is-
Setback and lot coverage.
Maximum of the coverage.
Yep.
Because I know when I put my little shed in the back, it was before the new ordinance came in.
Mm-hmm.
Cause I knew that when the ordinance was being adapted, with my size of my house and my garage, I wouldn't be putting my shed in because there was too much coverage of the lot.
So you heard it.
So that would be, that would be, one thing that might preclude him would be-
Right, setbacks, lot coverage.
Yeah, that, those would be the only things that would have to be really addressed for that.
In my reading of this, I didn't see anything else in the set of facts-
I didn't either.
That, that made it anything other than a generic accessory building.
Yeah.
What, what is max coverage, what are you referring to there?
Well, you have a lot that you can't have more than, fifty percent of the, having structures on no more than fifty percent-
Or paving.
Depending on which district it is, there is, there's a set amount of car, maximum-
By zone.
By zone.
The ground can be covered?
Yeah, the maximum amount of ground that can be covered in the zone.
Okay. Yep.
I did notice that when it brought up two structures, one was an accessory dwell, dwelling, one was a garage. The accessory dwelling, dwelling could have a full bath, this is a stated half bath, so immediately it's like, okay, it's garage.
Right.
I would say most mainly it'd be your setbacks and the, uh, coverage of lot coverage, and, and as far as the half bath, that would have to come under building to-
Yeah, I would-
Make sure that, that meets all the requirements there that's-
I think, uh, aside from the general setback and lot coverage requirements in the district, that this either falls to building code-
Right.
Right.
Because it's not, it's not being addressed as a, a second dwelling on the lot, so-
Or, or any kind of a commercial enterprise.
Exactly.
And then for fire code, ten feet away from, um, the house, usually.
Meeting all those codes, right.
And of course, and they'd need permits, whatever they would need with their electric, you know, electrical or mechanical or-
Yeah, this one to me was pretty simple, once I started drawing lines through the parts that I didn't consider to even be relevant.
Exactly.
Right.
You know, if, if he needs to use a wheelchair for access to the first floor, that's his call. You know, he's, I don't think, now, I don't know for, I didn't really dive into the, the ordinance, but I, I don't know whether there's a prohibition on a second story accessory structure anyway.
How about a second story on a-
On a garage, but I don't believe on an accessory building, depends on how high it is, I believe, there's a, might be a feet. And it might be large enough for a loft or something up there, but yeah.
It could be a higher-
Yeah.
That's a steep pitch, which leaves a lot of-
Would we determine that, um, his, um, shop, art shop for pottery and so on, wouldn't evolve into a home-based business? Because then there's another section that, that does apply.
He would become, uh, subject to the ordinance at the time he made the change.
Mm-hmm.
So, which could, which could go unnoticed. Yeah, anything that would impact the initial building permits based on home-based businesses might become more difficult to retrofit after the fact.
Right.
That would be, that would be up to him. You know, at, at the point where he were to change, that's because that's actually a change of use.
Yes.
And he would theoretically have to make that change of use with permission and by modifying whatever he needed to in his physical or other structure to, to conform.
Who would then be responsible to see that he's aware of that before proceeding so that-
Oh, I would have to, because I have to meet with them ahead of time, usually twice.
Notes in the file to that effect and so on, okay.
Yep, exactly.
On approval of a, of a structure like this, that, that could be something noted in our minutes that this is as a just personal use, it is not permitted as a, for a business use, so that could-
I, I would think also that if, if you had approved this, we'd never see it. If you had not approved it and he came to us on appeal-
Yes.
And if he was sitting there right now, my first question to him would be, do you expect to have customers coming to this property? Because if you do, you can't.
Yes.
You know, you're not zoned for that, you're going to have to go back to the drawing board, look at home businesses and see what modifications you need to make your plan, which is why you're here.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's how I would, and I think we would make it, you know, abundantly clear to him at that time that this is personal, you know, we don't, it's not our call what you do in your shed. You know, if you want to go out there and watch football games and eat bonbons, knock yourself out, but you can't, you can't run it as a non-residential-
Operation.
-operation.
It, that's interesting in that when I first heard business, I didn't even think of customers.
Yeah.
I thought this is somebody going to work, just probably using FedEx to ship.
You know, we-
In that regard, you don't have a customer in that.
Right.
I don't think any of us or any of the neighbors or any of anybody has an issue with somebody working at home.
Yeah.
But, once you start, you know, the danger of a small at-home business that has any customers is what happens when a couple a day turns into fifty?
That's right.
They start parking all up and down the block and there's noise and, you know, every-
Yeah.
And all of a sudden, there's signage in the front yard.
Yes, yep.
Yeah, baby steps. Yeah, customers are the, are going to be the rub with any kind of a commercial use of a residential property. I think if, you know, if somebody's sitting in their hobby room in their basement or wherever, their home office and working, there's no external impact on the neighborhood.
Exactly.
I think that would be my whole concern with this, more than, more than the use would be the impact.
Okay, well, I appreciate it, thank you.
Any other comments?
Well, it did have this point about if the resident uses a wheelchair and an ACA and such things like that, must the studio- If the person building this for themselves has a wheelchair, I think they'll take care of that.
Yeah, I'm sure you would address that as it needed.
And that would be something, again, that we would defer to the building department.
Yep.
You know, if he, if he wants to design it that way, you know, there's certain-
Rate requirements.
Ramp, incline, you know, degree percentages and so on and so forth. Well, if we're done with that one, we can move on to our next imaginary case study, which is number ten. And this one has, as Teresa has mentioned, a scenario that is very similar to things that we're likely to see here very often, which is a commercial use on a main floor and residential uses on other floors. And I think, at least for me, to some degree, this mirrors the last one in a lot of ways, coming back to, uh, over and above what we're dealing with, uh, it's gonna, we're going to defer a lot of this to building code enforcement. Uh, in any kind of a structure, now, I, I believe that Manistee, which is not uncommon in a downtown district, does not allow residential use of a main floor, is that correct?
Uh, let's see, so if we go to the next page where it says C three, it's right in here, yep. Um, says duplex, dwelling accessory, dwelling lower floor accessory, dwelling street, ground floor accessory, dwelling upper story accessory, subject to section fifteen oh four.
So according to section fifteen oh five, a ground, street or ground level dwelling is permitted in existing structures within the C three.
It is.
Mm-hmm.
Cause that's uncommon from my experience in other towns.
Yes, it normally is.
And it says that that, that dwelling on that street level shall be accessed by a secure and separate entrance dedicated for the exclusive use of the building residents or guests. In other words, you're, you don't go into the store and then go into the apartment or whatever.
Correct.
Have a separate door open from it.
Yep.
Cause my recollection from being in other places is that you're allowed to use the main floor, some of the main floor area for residential purposes, but it can't be the quote-unquote the storefront.
Right.
You can't have your big plate glass picture windows with somebody in there eating, you know, Cheetos and watching TV. Um, that it has to be-
Yeah.
You know, it has to be a commercial use. Even if it's not the entire depth of the building, what's visible to the passersby has to be a commercial use, or at least not a blatantly residential one.
Mm-hmm.
At that point H talks about forty percent shall be reserved for commercial space, if it's on the ground floor.
Yep, good catch, great.
Okay, I have not read this one in, in much detail, I'm just kind of going off my experience elsewhere.
No, no, that's good.
But this does imply, yeah, you could have living space there, as long as you have that forty percent commercial.
Well, then another thing that I want to bring to your attention is, because it is downtown, they would first need a certificate of appropriateness in the historical district. That would be number one thing that they would need to do.
And that kind of would, that kind of falls back to the, the storefront use?
Yes.
I think so.
Yep.
Now, the other thing that we have had to broach here before also, at least once since I've been here, and I've only been on this board a short amount of time, is that downtown properties are not required to have any off-street parking.
Exactly.
When you, a, a commercial use of property versus a residential use of property have two completely different parking profiles, because generally speaking, uh, the downtown parking, so to speak, is pretty much empty after business hours.
Mm-hmm.
Where with a residential use, those cars are kind of the opposite way. They're there for extended periods of time at night, and some of them may not move for days or weeks.
We ran into a somewhat similar situation, I think before you came on Marty. Downtown, uh, next to the, talk about it?
The, the music hall.
The music hall.
Yeah.
That was the part, the people that owned, bought it, uh, wanted to put a restaurant on the first floor and a hotel.
I think it was five, six, seven, eight rooms.
Units on the second floor.
So there's fifteen parking-
Yeah, and so that was the issue we came up with. Where are these people that are renting rooms for overnight or whatever parking? And if I, if I remember right, I think we were making a requirement that the owner had to make arrangements to provide off-street parking for these tenants coming in. Yeah, because they, there was no way they, if they're going to be permitted to park on River Street overnight, especially in the winter time, when you've got the plowing requirements.
Okay, so that's great you brought that up, because we've had potential buyers come to myself and Andrew, who is Andrew Stafford with Economic Development. We're meeting with them, and this is the exact thing why I pulled all of us together. What can I do to tell these potential buyers where they can park? Where could they rent? What are some different things that I want to have this conversation of?
Under the ordinance, as it's written, are they required to provide parking?
No.
So I read there was parking requirements, if you're a commercial, if you're residential, if you have multiple residential, it's, it's in the ordinance somewhere, I read it when this, I got the email.
Did you?
And I was sort of calculating, it sounds like they got to have at least seven parking spots.
Um-
It was about that many.
Nope, it's not for the C three in the business area.
Right.
Not for residential.
Something about parking.
Yep, there is a lot about parking, but not for-
Quantification, if you have at least, however, for every station of three customers, you have to have a parking spot for every-
Right, that's, that's if you're required to have parking at all.
Yeah, but the, yeah.
Yes.
Through that.
Yeah, he went through that with scoobies and-
I went through the reverse thing, which is I, I developed property that didn't have any parking, and I wanted parking. And the argument I had is they said, well, you, you're not required to have a parking lot, therefore, we're not going to let you have one. And my response was, how do you run a business with no parking?
Right.
I'm not in an area where there's a lot of pedestrian traffic, mine's all vehicular.
Yes.
You know, the comment was, well, you can sell a lot of hot dogs to people on the boardwalk on the river. And I'm like, not in February I can.
Exactly, right.
So, so there, there's the reverse too, but we have big parts of town, Maxwell Town in particular, where a lot of residential properties have no off-street parking at all.
Yes.
There's an awful lot of demand here. Some of the streets here, people park on both sides, and you literally have to wait your turn to drive up the street.
Oh, definitely, yeah.
So, off-street parking is a, is a big issue here. Um, and the complication we have with these kinds of developments is if you have, especially in a situation where it might be a shorter term rental,
Mm-hmm.
Um, those people that are going to rent those eight, ten, fifteen units, where are they going to park? The closest place they can.
Correct, and now they're-
Half the time, that's right on River Street.
Straight, and then it's intruding on businesses that would need that. So that's why I need to hear from you, what are, you know, cause these, these potential buyers are coming to me saying, I want to do all this, but all of a sudden, the parking is the problem.
And, and I think that not only is it for the residential uses, I think it's also, and this is not confined to Manistee, it's also for employees.
Oh, yes, absolutely, very good point.
You also don't want to get back into the parking meter scenario, because that, that drives people away. You can go to Meyer and Park for free, you can go to Walmart Park for free. Why should I pay to go downtown and park?
Right.
But that is also used as, parking meters are used as deterrent from employees and/or residential uses in taking quote-unquote the best spots and sitting there all day.
Mm-hmm.
Because once you've got fifteen people from residential development, taken up both sides of the street, seven spots in front of a business, that business is going to suffer.
Right.
So what needs to be probably developed is some kind of a requirement for such a use-
Right.
That you are going to, A, provide parking, you're going to rent some or you're going to do something.
Okay.
And you're going to monitor that they're using it. Now, if somebody is, if somebody that's an employee, somebody from one of the restaurants downtown is, is doing delivery, and they can pull up to the front door and they're going to run inside and grab what they're delivering and be gone?
Yep.
There's an issue there, I don't think.
No, not at all.
And maybe even suggesting a fifteen-minute only.
Yes.
You know, or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, or when somebody's moving in.
Rent, the only lots I were coming to mind that we talked about, there's this one down, um, the north side of River Street, between the barber shop and the insurance. I'm not sure who owns that, that, that was originally a car lot one times. Uh, they possibly had to make arrangements to rent property there, or even on that lot, corner parking lot across from the, the Blue Fish.
There are, there's a whole bunch of city parking.
About, yeah, I mean, I'm just, these are private ones, these are private ones. But the-
There's, there's city parking up here.
Yep.
Maybe it could be a requirement that, that whoever's doing this development has to per- and the first thing that they're going to say though is, if, is, is if it's too far away, um, it's not, but then you come back to the original discussion, which was you're buying a building that doesn't even have the room for the parking.
Parking, right.
And you're the one that wants to develop it.
Yeah.
So the burden's on you.
Yes, it is.
You're dealing with a finite situation already, you looked at the building knowing it didn't have parking. If you've already bought it, maybe you should have checked beforehand, but you, you're going to need to provide parking for any use that's going to be longer than a, than a sh- maybe we need to look into, and I don't know if we already have it, a designation of short-term versus long-term parking.
And we don't right now, so that would be something, yep.
And a long-term parking is considered more than-
X number hours or more than twelve hours or something like that.
I think it should be shorter than that, because twelve hours lets all the employees downtown park right in front of the store.
Right.
I think it needs, you know, we're probably talking more in the-
Six hours.
And I, that's too long. Um, I, I think that, you know, if, if, if one of us is going downtown to get something, we're not going to be more than a couple, two, maybe three hours to go have a meal, to go to a couple, maybe even three, four stores.
Or to the movies.
On Filer Street, it's two hours.
Yeah, I was going to say, isn't that, that's a two-hour limit on it.
Yeah, two hours, followed by Jackfight.
So, we've already got that under control by ordinance.
So then, then, then it's down to somebody to enforce it.
Right, which has been a problem.
Was there previously an appeal that was approved for a off, for allowing a five-room hotel?
There was.
Yeah, there was, and there was a requirement that they were going to have to provide off-street parking.
Right, and I remember reading something about that. Did that not take, did that development not happen?
No.
And it was before my time, yeah.
They put, they got in, they applied for a lot of grants and government cheese, and it didn't pan out. I think there was a-
But it did get to the point where this board-
Yes.
Approved the exception because they would find off-street parking.
Yeah.
That was a, that was a requirement.
Are we bound by those, are we bound by those previous decisions and precedents?
Precedents.
We would probably face some concern about whether we're consistent with that.
Well-
Well, it's a new board, too.
But isn't the code, I'm working from something written, I know that's what caught me was, okay, this is a parking problem, and that's why I, in a digital copy, I'd be there already. And I was on the section about parking, and I was reading it, and I thought I saw an equation that allowed me to say, well, here's the kind of, now, then I've heard that doesn't apply here.
Yeah.
See, maybe something should be fixed in this written record.
Part.
Indicates how you can sort of quickly make a judgment, not quickly, but effectively and efficiently make a judgment, because otherwise, last thing you want to do, right, is have someone come in and go, oh, we'll, we'll just figure it out with you. I don't think you ever want to be there, right? You want to be there, here's what the written code is.
Yes.
We're going to work from this, and then you said, is there, you know, do we want to call it, uh, you know, alternate or a consideration away from the code? Yeah, that's the discussion, right? But first you work from what's written.
A huge, a huge part of our issue here is that, as, as, as opposed to being one of the townships, where somebody's going to go put up a new building in a cornfield and has all kinds of room, we're dealing almost in every situation with an existing building, because there's not all that much new development here, there's a lot of redevelopment. And a lot of those buildings are pretty much, especially in C three, are wall-to-wall on that property.
They're all on, yeah.
So, that's the practicality of what we're dealing with, is we're, we're expecting people to provide parking where there isn't any. And so, as a result, and, and so we're going to require them, as a condition of working with them on their development, there's going to have, you could, you could choke off all the, all the progress by just saying, no. You could open up the floodgates and let them park anywhere by saying, there's no requirement for parking at all in C three, park wherever you want, or some kind of a happy medium, which I think, if we looked at a short versus long-term parking definition,
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, enforcement is somebody else's issue, that's-
Right.
Maybe that goes to the city manager or the police chief. But I think for us, our, you know, part of our role, I think, is, is considering our impact of anything on the neighbors. I think that's the biggest part of what we do. When somebody wants to do something, we're not here just to say, well, you can't do that because we don't like it, as much as we are here to say, we need to be concerned with what your change is going to do to existing things around you. And if you're all of a sudden going to take up twenty parking spots for eight hours every day, to somebody that's always had access to that parking for their customers, we're kind of the ones that have to be moderating that. So that's kind of how I, I'm viewing our role in this, and especially in this scenario.
Yeah, with this particular, um, case study, there's a reference to section, uh, five one four about, um- um, vehicular parking spaces, access lighting requirements. I don't see that section provided in the case study, so I'm not sure.
Which is, I think, what I went to.
And I.
Must've been when I was looking into.
I remember getting it as well, and it was very specific, but the question is, is it in conflict with the historic district or the?
Yes.
C three?
Yes, which I did not see anything referencing that.
And when we get into the, to something other than a case study, which is kind of fun to discuss, um, we'll have real people here who'll be very concerned about the outcomes because they're already to.
Spent a lot of money.
Money and time.
Yes.
And so on. And, um, it would be really critical to have relevant sections attached to whatever, um, documents we're gonna be reviewing for an appeal. I'm sure they will be because by then you will have had to prepare everything to answer.
Yes.
The questions before they even get to the point of appeal.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
And I think also, in, now that I'm looking at section 514, and it basically says that there are parking requirements in every district, but the reason that they would be in front of the zoning board of appeals at all is because it is generally going to be an existing property that somebody's trying to retrofit, and they're already handicapped because there's not available land. You know, I don't think we would allow somebody to go put a new hotel in the middle of downtown without adequate parking.
Mm-hmm.
We just wouldn't allow it.
Right.
Um, because it's new development.
Information in 514, because I remember looking at it. In fact, it's right here now. I found it, I didn't have to go online to find it.
Yeah.
Um, and there's, there's a lot of detail about here. Complying with that degree of detail is probably gonna.
That's why they're here.
Yeah, it's probably.
Because they, they, they can't meet it.
These kind of appeals, um, because it's very straightforward. Um, it may be a hardship, but it is what, what is on the code right now.
And we're, what you were just relating is someone's coming in here personally with an interest in this. They're gonna start arguing the value of what's written there, and it, it becomes a free-flowing discussion and people pushing for interest, or, or do you get ahead of that and go, for that commercial district, which I've heard about for the few years I've been here, and about businesses trying to do, I've already heard about it and I'm not involved in this, that, that maybe there is, there should be the type of guidance that says, for that strip, which is different from anywhere else, right?
Right.
River Street is, is a critically different piece of property. And I, I'm thinking that's where the zoning board might wanna be cogni, well, obviously cognizant of, but also establish some guide.
We have an awful lot of residential property too.
Under the.
I'm talking about River Street.
Yeah.
In what exactly this scenario?
Under section J, they're, they're, um, they're given the latitude to, to approve, but it isn't without their approval. So it's not gonna happen unless the planning commission approves. And if they don't approve, then the appeal comes to us.
Right.
And those are difficult decisions for an appeal board to make because the details about why the, the item wasn't approved are crystal clear.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's probably a position that the planning commission should take action to put a parking provisions in that part, that section of the ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
So that, okay, we can judge on what they have rather than us creating a precedence or whatever.
Just because this scenario indicates, someone wants to open up a new shop in one of those empty buildings, they would immediately come under this. And when I saw this, this said at least seven parking spots you'd have to have. And it's like, where?
I, I think.
They're not available.
I think that, I think that the only time this really is triggered is if there's a change of use.
Yes.
It's always been retail, and you're gonna open a retail shop. I don't think you have a burden for those seven parking.
No, and it says so specifically under section H.
Your grandfather.
Permitted use.
Okay, I took it as a change of.
For district parking provided does not apply except to hotels, motels, and residential use condominiums. That might come into effect on this particular case study in as much.
And that was, that was the situation with the Music Vault property because it had never been anything other than retail.
Mm-hmm.
And what they were proposing was everything except retail.
Yeah, because it was retail on the first floor. It wasn't residential on the second, if I remember right, years.
Oh, many moons ago.
That's why there's that second separate entrance.
Last century.
Yeah, does that timing have any effect here? It's been laying dormant, it's derelict, and now someone's gonna take it from unused to used. Do you get the grandfather back to the last time it was used?
I, I had a, a rather contentious situation when I was a much younger man with a property where I made the point that I thought was valid, that even though the property had been vacant for some time, that I did not change the use. I was opening it back up as what it was. And, and their contention was, well, when it's discontinued.
Mm-hmm.
It becomes no use. And when you open it back up, and there wasn't even zoning the last time it was used. And their, their argument was that, um, once you re-establish the use that's been dormant, that you then are subject to the zoning ordinance. And I don't think we ever really, really did get to any clear resolution on that. We just kinda agreed.
That, that type of rule, so to speak, or pending agreement would be copied into your code some.
Yeah, I, I don't know if, if, if a use that goes dormant. Now, I do know that on a, on a special use permit, that once a use is discontinued, that.
After a year, yeah, a year or two years.
Yeah.
And that, I've done used it.
Yeah, I think it's two years.
But I don't know on whether just a, something that does conform when it's used becomes unused, whether it, I don't believe it goes away. Because if it did, we'd have a lot of downtown buildings who would need to provide parking. Cause there's an awful lot of them down there that had been dormant for more than a year at different times.
Unless there's a planning study on it that says, the parking's not available, and the greater good is open up the.
Yes.
The commercial, F, you know.
Well, that's basically, that, that section of, um, of the code says under H, it's, it's, does not apply except to. So any commercial use down there, no matter how long that building's been empty, when it goes back into commercial, it, the, the parking requirements do not.
Oh, it does say that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it says.
Now, now that I'm thinking back on, on the Music Vault property too, part of the issue that we had with that, when it was my first meeting on, as being on this board, a big part of the issue was that what they were proposing was not, did not cleanly meet any definition. It was, it was, they had to, they had to call it a hotel because it was not purely a residential use, because it was a commercial residential use. It wasn't apartments, it was short-term rentals. And, and I remember having the discussion, I don't know if Dennis was at that meeting or not, but we at one point recommended to staff, and I don't know if it just ended there or not, that, that, that the planning commission determined that there'd be a definition of a hotel motel, that it has at least X number of units.
Yeah, I remember, I thought that was a question brought up, right?
Yeah, that, that unless, unless you were 10 units or more, or 12, or 15, or whatever the magic number was, that you weren't gonna be classified as a hotel. Um, you know, if you've got four rooms, you're not a hotel. You know, even if you're doing Airbnb or something. Um, so I don't know where that ever went, whether that, that definition, you know, there's a few definitions I think that are missing.
Mm-hmm.
That would aid in a lot of these, especially in your position where somebody came in.
Yep.
Because, you know, you, you get people that come in the door with an idea or a project or something, and what they're proposing doesn't really fit in any box.
Right.
Or it does, but it shouldn't. It's like, well, I guess we have to call you this, even though it's not really what you're doing.
Mm-hmm.
So, some of this is just better definition.
What I'm thinking right now is regarding parking, uh, there is a section in the ordinance, section 514, is parking.
Yep.
And it talks about, this is maybe what you had looked at, how many spaces, whatever.
Right.
I think there should be something in there that, for the C, uh, the commercial C district, or the River Street district is a, an exception to these, that, here's some of your guidelines.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, should be adapted in there so that, oh, it says a dwelling, I have to have two places of parking for my apartment, my dwelling upstairs, or, um, this way here, uh, River Street, where there's limited parking. I think there should be some exceptions and some requirements.
Mm-hmm.
An, an exception, contrary to everything that's otherwise permitted for parking.
Now.
Again, that comes under, uh, planning commission to make that change.
Right, right.
Now, I'm looking in the definitions, uh, section 209.
Mm-hmm.
For, at hotel.
Mm-hmm.
And it says a facility offering transient lodging accommodations, but there's no threshold.
Uh-huh.
You know, if, if, if you have one room that you're renting out to somebody, are you a hotel? You know, where, shouldn't there be a, I know that is an example in building code, um, for like the ADA compliance.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if you have fewer than seven rooms, you don't have to have ADA compliance for an upper level. So there should be some kind of, there should be some kind of a, um, a trigger, some kind of a threshold under which you're not a hotel, because when you're a hotel, then you have to provide parking.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe, you know, again, I think we're, we're in a situation where a lot of this is just definitions that need a little tweaking.
And a lot of the questions that we'd be asking should be addressing what the planning commission has. He should be answering, uh, reviewing what the planning, the ordinance calls for.
Mm-hmm.
And whether we need to give a variance to that item rather than creating a whole new.
Oh, right.
Subject yourself.
Right. But I just wanted us to have a case study so I could get your guys' opinion. I mean, and it's just a different perspective with you guys doing this. But this is, some of the things that are coming to me quite a bit, that these businesses wanna come in, and the biggest hang-up right now was parking.
Yeah.
And so, and I can talk to the PC a little bit about that, but I wanted to know, like I found today, you guys had that two years ago. I didn't know about that. Now I'm gonna look back and Paul had reviewed it, that, um, ZBA that came to both of you. I mean, that's gonna be a great example for me to review and to look at, and I didn't even know about that. So I think that's gonna be really good.
And the ordinance, regular ordinance is better than like, Paul was saying, coming back to haunt us.
Yes.
Okay, you said they, I can get through this, they could do that, why can't I now?
Right.
This way here, the ordinance says this.
Yep.
Okay, I can, it says that I need to have five spots. I can only provide two, okay. Then there comes a question, do we give a variance to that or whatever? But we have to address any, any variance request.
Was it in here?
What is written in the ordinance. So I think, I think the PC has a little, little homework to do to get some.
Yes.
I like.
Yep.
Oh, that's for non-conforming users.
Yes, absolutely.
Question the notion that there's a commercial exemption on this because one of the parts of 514 states if you're eating or drinking establishment, you have to have parking spots. That is a commercial establishment. So there isn't a blanket commercial establishment exemption, unless it's hidden somewhere else.
Right.
Somebody else might know about, but then you need to point to it from this. If you go back to that little table, I was looking over your shoulder.
Oh, right, the table, yep.
The table, the, right there, eating and drinking establishments, one space for each three seats of legal seating capacity. That's commercial.
Yeah.
So there is not, if there's a commercial exemption, it should be tied into that line and actually remove that line. So in anything like this, we gotta tie information together as best we can. That, that's one thing I would look at this. If I'm running a process development here, it's like, oh, boy. The one thing, I'd wanna be able to pull this information fast. It should be digitized. I'd like to have a digital copy right in front of me that you can quickly hyperlink between this, that, and the other thing and go, boom, here's the rules.
Right.
Now, if you want exemption, exception to these rules.
Rules, that's right.
Then we're here to talk about it, but right now.
Or have hardship.
And if we were to decide, these rules are silly, they don't work for this, then it would be good outside of that engagement.
Right.
Fix the rule before the meeting ever happens.
Exactly. Yep.
So.
But I, I think that, that asking the planning commission to look at long-term versus short-term parking, and asking them to consider a threshold for when are you a hotel.
Yes, those two.
I think those two things would, would make big steps towards solving the ambiguity here.
Yep.
And there's naturally, I would presume, a close time between a planning commission, which is a general planning commission, not just the school or public facilities, but general planning and the zoning.
They're, they're supposed to look forward, and we're supposed to deal with trouble after staff has said, you can't do that.
Okay.
Yep.
And after what, what someone comes into that wants to do doesn't comply with, they find a problem with.
And I think that 90% of the time, the reason somebody's gonna be here is because of an ambiguity.
Yeah.
Yes.
Somebody's gonna say, well, that doesn't make any sense.
That's right.
So fixing those before they get here, and if we've already had one and you potentially have another one, then now's the time to get these things defined.
Right.
And I think that, that if somebody's under a certain threshold, and it's not gonna negatively impact the, the business district, they can park wherever.
Right.
But if there's gonna be an impact in a long-term parking scenario, they should be required, even if it's going to the city and reserving certain spots, or even having just an agreement.
Yes.
That they're gonna park in a designated area.
Area, right.
Um, I mean, these lots that are, I'm trying to figure out which way I'm facing. I think we're, is this?
River Street's behind us here.
Maple Street.
Maple Street, right up there.
Right here.
Okay, so across Maple Street, right by the news advocate.
All block.
Right, that's correct, all of that. Yep.
So for somebody that's right there, that's the solution. Now, another block up River Street, it's not as clear. You have to go across.
Is that defined anywhere? Is there such a thing, like when you pull up, go to the map, the parking guidance, you go, and in our city, these are the.
Doesn't it, areas, there is.
There is, and there ought to be.
Yep.
Make these decisions and say, at least be smart enough to go.
Yep.
Here's what's available.
Your people have to.
Yep. Yep, there.
Provides parking, we'll even plow it for you, but you gotta park there.
Right.
Because it's long-term, your people can't park on the street. They can park anywhere they want, they can't park in the area that's, that is no long-term parking. And that's the solution for that, to not play favorites with whether it's employees or somebody's renter.
Right.
Is no long-term parking, period. We don't care who you are.
Yep.
If you're down there, you got two hours to eat, do your shopping, get out of the spot, let somebody else have it. But then again, it's enforcement.
Yeah. Well, we do have a, um, Toby, he's our code enforcement officer. He just started.
And the police department.
Oh, yeah, of course.
People who are staying their parking limit.
Yep, that's right, yeah. But no, I mean, to me, you have no idea how much value just bringing you guys together and just having this conversation. This has been very grateful for me. Maybe you don't probably see it, but I do, because I'm hit with these all the time, and I just wanted, I mean, all of you had some great input, so I appreciate it. I appreciate you guys coming together, just doing this, having these couple scenarios. Yep, absolutely.
Has some work to do in, in the parking, addressing whether there's exemptions or whether there's restrictions, like the limited parking on River Street and that, and that And that, and that all has to be, get it in black and white, so you've got something to say.
Yeah.
Okay, here's what our ordinance calls for, so you're not stuck trying to.
Yeah, I think in many ways, though, the, the rest of this particular scenario, again, falls back on, on building code enforcement, falls back on.
Planning commission, yeah, yep.
But I, you know, the parking seems to be the crux of the issue.
I would say so.
Which is a planning commission first responsibility, right?
Exactly.
They should be looking at that. We could then arbitrate.
Yeah, we can arbitrate questions that what they, what they've come up with, we can arbitrate as to.
Yep, yep. But one thing I did want to show you, when you look at C three, when you do those district regulations, like this one, maximum lot coverage, hundred percent. You don't have to have a single blade of grass.
Makes sense.
Yeah, because of down there, yeah.
Probably seeing, they take.
Exactly, all of it, yep, yep.
And it's not just River Street, because it's even up on First Street.
First Street, yes, yep.
The one house about in the middle of that block, past the DQ, and they put that whole addition on the back, all the way to the back parking lot.
You know who that is?
Yeah, and I wonder who that could be. It's him. Yep.
Guy buying that a couple of times when the trucks are trying to back in there.
Umbre trucks.
Yeah, they really have traffic.
And you'd be surprised at how many people have come to me and are fuming, and I pull this out and I say, look at, hundred percent. Yeah, but I mean, but they do, they look at that and they're thinking, this is a residential neighborhood, why is this going on, what is this happening, and I say, it's in the ordinance, you need to look at that.
It's not a pure residential neighborhood, I expect.
No, I could put a five-story hotel there.
Yeah.
That is like Rosas.
Yes, but no parking.
Oh, that's C three, okay.
I can't do that, I can't do that the other side of thirty-one.
No.
So maybe that doesn't make any sense either.
That's crazy.
Well, there's, in, in this aspect, that's the planning commission saying downtown has to have room to grow.
Yeah.
You know, if, if you're just going to make downtown that couple rows of brick buildings, where are you going to build anything new?
That's right.
You're not.
Yep.
So that's kind of the city saying, this is where downtown's going to expand.
Well, and we're right now, I got a grant that I wrote for Williams and Works for help with rewriting our master plan, so those are things that we're tackling and, yes, with that, absolutely.
I presume something like the, with the. The Indian Reservation, you know, the old casino, I've seen them come into the city council, talk about their plans. That's a huge thing if it were to happen.
Yes.
That they have to provide the parking, and that's just called by the city to say, if you didn't, your facility wouldn't work, the city wouldn't, everything would suffer.
Yeah, because they're, they're talking about almost a hundred rooms.
Yes.
You can't throw that out there and say, no parking required.
Right.
So, and I, which I believe is maybe a part of the equation in there, I don't know.
But I think, I think thresholds on what is considered a hotel.
Uh huh.
I mean, the, the way it's defined now is pretty broad. I mean, if you have two sleeping rooms, technically you're a hotel. Transient lodging accommodations to the general public, regardless of numbers.
Yep.
And you're a hotel.
So that's the, that's that music place.
Yep.
Somebody wants it at the hotel. I've already heard that discussion. So what, they couldn't take it per the current city ordinance because they can't define their required.
They, they, they have no place on premise to provide parking. There's no, literally no land. So our requirement of them, if my memory is right, was you're going to have to figure out off-street parking. You can't, you can't park on the street.
Right, the bird.
We could be a part of going to the planning commission going, what's available off-street, because guess what, that's, that's general use. You don't get to claim any of it. You're just part of.
Yeah, you can't, I don't think the city can really designate so many spots in a public parking lot for them.
You just have to be aware, this is where you're expected to park. If someone's on the street, you're going to get a ticket after two hours and you have nothing else.
Yeah.
Are, are we going to cover the rest of the stuff on the agenda, because there's quite a bit you have to do, it looks like to me.
Other than you talked about after this case study, have we sufficiently beaten this one to death?
I would just like to say, as a newcomer into this, I thought the case studies were beautiful, and I got to think, if this is my job, it is hard to think about what might happen if someone doesn't throw you these.
Oh, right.
You never know what's coming in the door.
No, I don't.
Coming, so then you can try to go through this material to say, do I have this covered?
Right, well, and another aspect is you might find a little bit in this section, but then you're finding another section and then wait.
In a different scenario.
Right, and then you have to really look at your definitions and, yeah, absolutely. And also, I've been spending a lot of time with my PC. You're all new. You're giving me this great feedback, great feedback with all of this. All right.
So, on to old business. We have nothing scheduled. Does anybody have any?
Nope.
I don't think we have any.
There were two pieces of old business from the last session in January.
We have a couple of pieces that are still breathing, but I don't, I think one.
Is there anything that we need to know about those being new?
One of them, I believe, was a project for a little penthouse kind of a structure in Morton-Saul. It had some kind of a variance of some nature to it.
Yeah, for the, there's a structure. On top of the building that the modified one was going to be a little bit taller than what was originally.
And I'm trying to remember if that hasn't just kind of fallen off, gone dormant.
Nothing has happened down there that I've seen at all.
I think that's a project that they sought approval for and are not actively pursuing right now. The other one was a garage on, right here, not maybe a block up.
Yes.
That, that was, I think, too close to the neighbor's house, too close to the street, too close to a lot of things.
Yep.
And they, I think, got, before my time here, I think they got a variance.
Yep, they did with the garage.
They, that garage is pretty much built.
Yeah, that's right.
It's already there.
Yep.
They had, they got a variance back then, they tore down their garage, little tiny garage in the back.
Nope, that little one's not tore down yet. When this one is inspected by the building inspector and it's closed out, I think they gave them like sixty or ninety days to take everything out of the little garage, move it to the next, and then they have to tear it down.
And I think those are the only two we've got going.
And that one there, the, the neighbors, adjoining neighbors, gave their blessing to the, the request.
I'd request this, if there were cases prepared for both of those still pending businesses, if the new members could see those.
Sure, sure.
That they're, because they'll obviously still have possible life, we should brief ourselves before that.
Before they show up.
Yep.
Before they show up, that would be excellent, thank you.
Yeah, at least get a status report on them.
Sure.
If they're closed out and done, in particular, the Morton one, because I don't, I know that, I don't think that's been constructed.
Yeah, and I just heard through the rumor, yeah, because that was before my time too, yeah, I.
Also.
Yeah, so I don't know.
Is that the three forty-eight River Street parcel?
No.
Nope.
This was in discussion. It says that there had been twice approved by the, by ZBA, but nothing has progressed.
Yeah.
This is on Morton-Saul, so it would be good to see those two previous files.
I think there was, I think there was an approval, I think there was an approval of the project and then he needed an extension, and I think that was approved. And then I, one of my, I think I've had two meetings, this is my third meeting. I think my recollection is that somebody came from Morton-Saul, or maybe it was a contractor or something, at, at the last meeting that we had. And basically said, we're still kind of kicking it around, we haven't really decided if we're doing it or not.
Well, for the sake of institutional history, if the newest members could get those over to us.
Me too, because I don't think I ever saw.
And I think it was good for two years, so yeah, that's coming up, I'm sure, for expiration.
That three forty-eight River Street is that one we're talking about, the music hall.
That's the music, okay.
Yep.
I was reading it going, sounds like that's going on.
Yep.
Right, that was the only other piece that caught my eye.
So that's our new business.
That's a question, you just, so it's listed on the January twenty-fifth, no, minutes, as old business. So that carried into the last meeting.
From some previous.
From a previous, previous meeting.
It looks like it still has life, so those of us who both knew.
Right.
Good for us to see that file.
Yep.
It had been about a year, it had, almost a year had been, had lapsed since action was taken, nothing was developing, so just kind of bringing us up to date.
Yes.
Asking, be so, okay, has anything happened?
Right.
No, okay, we.
I think part of it was just asking Morton or their people to show up and tell us what their intentions were.
Well, you bring up Morton, but I don't see that anywhere in these minutes.
That's the.
It was under a member discussion. After the old business, two sections down there.
Ah, there it is.
Yep, member discussion.
Marty, that, your concern about fees and so on, did we solve this?
I, I, you know, I brought that up ten times. I don't think it's gone anywhere. That was, and I don't know if you were, is this your first meeting that we've been at?
No, I was here in January. I had started in October. We had our first meeting in January.
I, I know from my appearance before the ZBA that, that I was charged a seven hundred and fifty-dollar fee.
I saw that in the.
To appeal.
Right.
And, and I won.
Yep.
And, and then they raised it to twelve hundred and fifty dollars to appeal, and my comment was, if staff is wrong and somebody appeals, should it cost them anything?
It's worth the discussion.
And I, and I brought that, I brought it up to the planning commission, I brought it up to the city commission, I brought it up here, I think, two different times. As far as I know, it's never gone anywhere.
Yeah.
And if we review the bylaws at some point, that's probably in there, and we should see the most current fee schedule.
Fee schedule, right.
And understand the conditions and, and so on.
Yep.
I couldn't tell from reviewing the bylaws, reading them, but it appeared that we have amendment procedures built into them. So that the ZBA can actually amend sections of the bylaws.
Of the fee structure?
I don't know if the fee structure is part of that or not.
Right.
Probably the city attorney might weigh in on it.
Yeah.
But if, it would be worth doing.
I.
I've just kind of found it to be something that is unfair, especially to somebody that's not of means, if they're right. On something to have to cough up twelve hundred dollars or not appeal and just accept the rendering.
Right.
And it does speak back to a part of our mission as a ZBA, and that is overriding fairness. What is fair, what makes sense, what, what is just as opposed to what is the letter of the code. It's, it's worth the discussion.
Agreed.
Uh huh. When would you like to meet again so we could review the bylaws? We are getting new attorney too. I believe in the next month or two with city, for the city, we have a.
Do they select a new one?
Yeah, an RFP, yep, that they did, and they selected one, I believe.
So that's already been done?
Yeah, yep, so.
My sense that that's a decision that the chair would have to make with you and, and maybe the co-chair.
Yeah.
I don't know that we dictate to them, that's not appropriate, to, to my mind.
I know that under various compositions of this board, when I brought the, the fee thing up before, sometimes it's been kind of like, eh. Some, some people have not thought it was necessary or a good idea. Now there seems to be somewhat a consensus that, that it should at least be looked at and discussed.
Well, if it's an idea brought by someone on the board or some citizen who could show up, it should be attended to, right?
Yep.
It shouldn't just come up and then disappear.
And as far as setting the fee, does the city council set the fees?
I would think you've got to come back and council it, change it.
A recommendation.
Yep, recommendation.
Also, whether they.
I think the planning commission would have to make the recommendation, I don't think we have much recommendation authority other than making a determination on a case.
Right.
I don't think we have much of any weight as far as ordinance goes, and that's, a fee is going to be part of the ordinance.
Other than to raise it.
Yeah, we can raise the issue and suggest that you should look at it.
Yep.
Maybe, that's not something else you may want to touch base with the planning on to see if.
Yep.
There's a fee schedule in there as what.
Well, and that will.
Up a year ago.
Well, that will take place when the budget changes over July first, so that's when the fee schedule would change, so.
It gives them enough time to work on it, so it's not the last.
Exactly.
Any other old business?
None that I know of.
Going to public comments. Seeing none. Staff reports. Historic district and planning commission.
So just the historical district, what we're trying to do, we sent a little letter to all the downtown businesses and just made them aware of. You really do need a certificate of appropriateness before you attempt to do any. We've got a few businesses that have gotten a building permit or don't ask for certificate appropriateness, do the work and then ask for forgiveness. So, that's been a little hard just to stress to them that, that is a must, that has to be done first. Then they have to have plans sometimes or drawings, and it's up to the historical district, you know, on a lot of measures, so. That's been a little bit, I think it was a little loose before, but yeah, they have to have approval, so. That's really about it with the historical district. We've been busy every month, somebody coming for a change, a use, you know, what they want to do. And then for the planning commission, I told you, the master plan wrote the grant for that. The master plan, I did a pop-up event, which was right down here, that's where I saw Marty, that's where I saw you at. That went well, the feedback from everybody, and I'm going to be having that, and I'm going to talk about that at the planning commission next week for that. Also, the other big topic is ninety-one Arthur, the Lakeside Social. That'll be coming to the planning commission. They will either look through the conditions and, or they'll actually approve or deny or approve of some conditions. So they have one last meeting that they're going to come in front of the planning commission, review all of that, so.
There was one aspect of that that I had just kind of been made aware of.
Uh huh.
And, and I thought that there was going to be a severe limitation on that property from setbacks, because the footprint of that property is mighty tiny. What I was just made aware of is they, they have purchased the parking area.
Yes.
Next door where the city of Milwaukee is.
Yes, that's correct.
And I don't know if there's some kind of a shared use of that with the city of Milwaukee or what, so that, that.
Yeah, because there's an easement through there, that they have to keep that easement in through there, yep.
So there's, that, that burden of that proposal has been eliminated, because I, I didn't see how they could ever pull off, you can't have a business with no parking.
Right.
So I didn't. You know, if you've got pedestrian traffic, it's one thing, but down there, you're not going to live twelve months a year on just the people in those condos wanting to go for a hamburger. So that should be viable, but you know, it's up to the planning commission and their review of, is that, is that a PUD?
No, no.
Bronfield, isn't it?
Yes, it's a Bronfield.
So, are we anticipating an appeal of anything?
No, I was just bringing it up. That was the, just the most current information for planning commission.
Thank you.
That's on the agenda, that's it. And then, do you have any questions for me?
Uh, just clarification on whether there's a construction board of appeals.
Yeah, I will find that out, but not that I have ever heard of, no, not at all.
Because in the, it's, on the site for the city's description of what this ZBA does, it clearly says they act as the building, a board of appeals and.
BWR.
Code Board of Appeal.
Yeah.
I understood that at the time that I applied for the position, only because I had some experience in both building and fire code.
Uh huh.
But perhaps that's just not the case. It would be good to have that cleared up.
Sure.
If that is part of our job, I wasn't aware of it either.
Right. Yep. I'll make sure that we address that.
I know that for the, for a while, though, anyway, the state was officially our inspection, our code enforcement, and they had their own appeal process. So they, they wouldn't have relegated it to us anyway, so that might have been a shifting.
Yeah.
A shifting job description.
Yeah, and then in that case, it's just a matter of clearing up what's listed in the city's webpage about the function and.
Yes.
Yeah.
As a homeowner, looking at that maybe two years ago, it's that state, I mean, code enforcement on a residential, that's state job.
It kept changing.
Yeah.
But it's the appeal issue that would, would bring a question about whether the city has the responsibility to answer those appeals based on what they've published.
And at least we've got a, our team here at city hall is on top of it. Contrary to when I was on planning and, and board of appeals back in the eighties. We had, Jerry Supersinski was our building inspector, and it was, many times, oh, go ahead, that bit'll be okay. You'd be surprised at how many things came up, oh, Jerry approved that. Ordinance says this.
Right.
Yeah, it just, it says, the zoning board of appeals also acts as the construction board of appeals as provided by chapter fourteen twenty one of the Michigan Building Code. And it's the fire board of appeals as provided by chapter sixteen ten of the International Fire.
We do that.
Yeah.
I know both of those, and I.
We got to get retrained there, Marty.
Oh, I already know the, I know construction code already, believe me.
And I, I was familiar that in other locales in Michigan, years ago, that that was not unheard of, that the local city acted as the final appeal. On contentious issues, which don't happen very often because both building and fire codes are pretty closely.
Both pretty closely governed.
And pretty closely governed, yeah.
Yep.
Thanks again, this was a, a good session for me, a lot to learn.
For me too. I think all of us can.
Thank you.
Get a takeaway.
Definitely.
All right.
Any members have anything else to discuss?
I think we've discussed quite a bit already.
I guess I have one, and that is as a new person, but I'm an alternate, that is there, you've given me this.
Yep, that is for you, no?
Yeah, I guess I'll look through this. This is not the code, because I know I saw stuff I saw online.
Right, which I could print, that other booklet has to stay here, because those go, you can reference those while we're in a meeting, but I can print you, that one's yours.
Okay.
The little one's yours, but the larger one stays here, yes, because it's required.
Accessible through the website.
Website, yes, yeah, all of that is.
Seat, there wasn't one at the seat.
This is mostly the zoning ordinance is primarily what this is.
Okay, then everyone has a copy of that. I was just wondering why I don't have a copy.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, because we.
Got it, I see.
It's right there, yeah, so that's the bug, so that's why. But I mean, I, if you ask me, we can print off the whole.